Yes, Department had meeting with Mr. Malloy today.
Okay.
So, thank you so much for coming, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I've just signed that's all.
Yes, yes, absolutely, and sometimes maybe I would find it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Got to have a sign in sheet.
And, uh, we went, we took our board down and the board was able to place a wreath at the Tomb of the Unknowns. And, um, because they'll allow for.
Then this French coat has her meeting at eleven, so if you need to see her, she'll.
And then we went to each grave and placed a wreath.
We're gonna go.
And.
Is there a sign in sheet?
You know, when we got back, I gave the story.
No, I believe it's just, uh, Mr. Malloy today.
Okay, I printed the story and of course, we got, um, nasty comments from family members of people that were buried there, but not killed in action. I had to specify, this is for the ones who lost their lives overseas, not for folks that are, because you can still be buried.
Right, yeah.
So, it was.
But she, I guess for the reason I wanna try and get it done, it was one of her bucket list items, because there's nobody else left but her and, and so she felt like it would be better for him to be there, where he would be remembered by all Americans.
Yep.
Than buried somewhere here, where maybe nobody would ever.
Absolutely.
And I have, I'm gonna try to get him done, I have, I'm working on my certificates for the four that I, um, that I pinned out the VDA. I didn't have certificates for them because I didn't know who I was.
Well, I guess I got them.
I've got all that information, so the new certificates, the D A R certificate, and bring them around. Trying to do it this week. I've just been, this weekend, a few weeks for me. I have vacation Bible school every night except Thursday night. I'm balancing with my preschoolers every night.
The calendar fills up quick.
Well, and I tell, I told my staff, because I'm doing, uh, I'm like in the craft room and I told my staff, I said, if I'm, if I, my hair is full of glitter and paint, by the end of the week, just ignore it, just, just leave me alone.
About five minutes, so sorry for the inconvenience, folks.
Okay, good.
Hello.
Did they never send you that yet?
Uh, actually, I was just checking and I don't think that they did.
Yeah, I did, yeah, just as long as I get it on by tomorrow.
Yep.
Just resolution number, so it's gonna be perfect.
Yeah, I, um.
One more, that'll be your control.
Matter of fact, so I emailed Dolly and I do have his phone number.
I saw your correction, Diane. I saw it, yep, I got it on.
I wanna look at like each and remember.
Well, you can right now, if there's any changes, I'd be happy to do it.
I didn't have like that.
Yeah, but if you have anything today, go free, no problem, that's what's for.
Thank you. Hello.
On this change order here.
Okay.
Was on the agenda a few weeks ago.
Okay.
We need to get the fiscal officer's side.
Yep.
And yearly, either you or someone in your office is asking us for a, a, um, fund number. And we pay these, they pay directly. I, I get the invoice, I send them off to either.
Okay.
O P W C, W P C L F, A R C, and that money goes down there and the money never comes into our hands.
Okay.
They pay them directly to the contractor.
Okay, is it, probably Kathy that's asking for that. I'm gonna, do you want me to just take this down and, and make sure that I, and then I'll get it.
Yeah, yeah, Lisa just gave it to me and we're filling up on this.
Okay. Okay, I will.
Trying to get it approved and, and this is the holdup in getting the fiscal, the certificate.
Okay. Okay, let me, let me just be sure that I'm signing it right.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll go downstairs and do it when I'm after and then we'll get it back to you guys.
Okay, all right, and when I use that word paid directly, yeah.
Quickly, right, okay, got it. I will.
Okay.
I understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Kathy. I will, I will get it, we'll get it through.
Okay, all right, thank you, Martha.
I'll get it, we'll get it out, get it through.
Okay. John, somebody's sitting there. Well, what's that? Well, Danny's, Danny's gonna be coming here. Uh, Paul said he's gonna be here about five, you know, any minute now. So, you didn't have any commissioners at your meeting? Do you have a quorum? Okay, well.
I appreciate that.
I don't know where Mauro's at, what he's doing. Oh, jeez. Okay. All right. Well, we have a lot on this agenda.
A lot of work, Mauro.
There's a lot of things. We're getting transit.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that looks nice. Did you get it going? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're yelling at people all day and they're like, no.
What's going on? Hunter, do you have a name? Sweet. Where, I think you were at a training or?
Yeah, conference, summer conference. Yeah, it was good, it was very good, very helpful.
Good, good. Good.
Of course, I'm overwhelmed, I have like a major list of things. I just like, I use my legal pad and just write everything down, all the questions I have down.
I know.
So, and I'm working my way through all of them. So, this is the one he's talking about, what I'm saying.
Oh, that's, uh, yeah, Howard.
You have him?
Yeah.
Has he been pinned or?
I'm pretty sure he has, yep.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, he's an active member at the D A V.
Okay. Yeah, we're on it.
Oh.
So, that, because I asked him, that I like, I have.
I've not known by name.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I could swear Howard sits next to him at the D A V.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I understand. Well, we have that with, yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's John. Oh. Oh, I don't know, this has to do with. Does this have to do with the roads in there? Yeah, this is drainage improvement, yeah, roadway and drainage.
Okay.
Might have water line, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
This one down here. After inspection by the county engineer for uncompleted work. So, does this one have, yeah, that, yeah. Being with the mayor. Tomorrow today.
Mr. Malloy. Your pen?
Got one. All right. Hello, do I guess? Okay, I guess Mauro's out with, uh, had a tooth pulled yesterday, so he's home with the ice bag. Uh, dispense the minutes, approve the bills, transfer money, sanitary engineer. And Commissioner Bob's on vacation this week, but I'll, uh, this has to do with that modification for E D G, uh, last week or the week before, in order to encumber, well, in order to appropriate the money for that Elm Road booster station for their engineering contract.
Okay.
Appropriations, treasurer, sheriff, sanitary engineer, planning commission, community development.
All right, treasurer is, um, this is, uh, money that's going to the land bank, um, uh, paying the land bank in order to pay invoices that are due. This is money that's just been, it's sitting there, but it's not been appropriated and it's, uh, it's a percentage of the delinquent, delinquency fees that are to be used for that. And this is actually going to the land bank, uh, for, uh, the Miracle Mart and the Ween Building trying to demolish it, okay? Um, then the sheriff's is the contract with, um, Newton Falls, um, School District, uh, for the resource officers. So, they're increasing an appropriation that they're receiving from, it's received from them. And if, when you go back to the, um, the revenues, the revenue amendment, you'll see that that actually matches with that. Um, with the sanitary enge, I'm gonna let Gary do the sanitary engineer, but I'll skip. Uh, the planning commission, um, is, uh, housing rehab projects, income paid from homeowners or states. And again, this was, um, you had money that was already there that they're just now appropriating. I don't know if Julie wants to say anything about that or not. Um, and then, uh, the other is, uh, eighteen, the thirteen hundred is the Warren City Share Fair Housing Project. And again, that is, um, kind of matched in the, uh, amended certificate as well. Did you have anything, Julie, on this? Yeah, I forgot. Yeah, I forgot about that, sorry. I get involved in what I'm doing. Gary, did you wanna talk about the?
Yeah, the eighty thousand commissioner, that has to do with that Elm Road modification also. I'm looking at Bob's, what he gave me here. That first one was to transfer the money from the four eighty eight fund, which was, is our replacement improvement fund to the project fund of Elm Road, which is four eighty four. And then, once it is in the four eighty four, the appropriation line for the budgeting, we had to increase the engineering line item by eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Five, transfer appropriations, senior service levy.
Uh, this is basically the accounting between my grant transportation program and my non-grant transportation program. Moving money between what's needed for the grant and what we're using for the other periods that are, are.
Um, the domest, or the domestic relations.
Martha Yoder, domestic.
Sorry, yeah, domestic relations, um, they're fixing and over budget and they're moving it from public defender to transporting prisoners. Um, I'm gonna skip over the sanitary engineers, let Gary do that. Board of Health is just, again, um, changing, it's a line item within the fund, mileage to re, uh, to remittances. Um, the planning commission is, um, there's two lines for that and then, uh, the eight hundred dollar one is the seminars and training, the advertising and printing for job posting. And then, um, the other one is administrative cost reimbursements to housing rehab repairs. And that's actually the correction error that was made within the budget initially. Um, it's not that they went over it, it was just something that wasn't, uh, noted specifically. Did you wanna handle the sanitary engineer and explain that, or do you want me to?
Uh.
Do you understand that?
I, I, I think I, I, I haven't enough here.
Okay.
That, uh, one seventeen nine hundred is ha, also has to do with that modification for Elm Road and inter-fund transfer, so that means we have to take money out of one line item and put it into another within the four eighty four to be able to cover that, uh, modification. That's the one seventeen point nine. And the twenty one thousand and eight oh six, that is a transfer to pay the bulk water and electric bill from Niles for the Southeast Water District. Uh, let's see here, the six oh four, that's also a transfer to pay the bulk water bill from Niles and the electric bill from Niles for the Southeast District.
So, the reason it's, it, it's, we're allowed to go between funds like that, but we were doing it in a different way before that the state auditor wasn't happy with. They weren't. So, we did this, the intra-fund transfer, the way that we're doing it. Instead of waiting and paying like later, we're doing it, um, like paying it directly right now. And so, that's based on recommendations from the state auditor.
Yeah, the, the way that Southeast District works is it is broken into the four township, the Brookfield and the Hubbard Public Water Systems. Brookfield would pay the entire bill to Niles for the bulk water and the electric. Then the four township and the Hubbard would reimburse it. So, I, 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 so that's the way we used to do it.
We're just doing it in a, in a way that's a little. Right, and we're doing it, it, this is a little bit faster way to do it, so we're not, like, there's less of a delay in it and that was recommended by the state auditor.
So, now all three of them are contributing.
Right.
Toward the bill.
Right.
At one time.
Okay.
Okay, six, receive the amended certificate of county budget commission number ten, twenty twenty three.
Okay, so the sanitary engineers, we've already talked about that with, with regard to the transfer money. The, um, the senior services levy, that was, again, the, the grant.
The grant.
Right, yeah, the O dot stuff and so it's increasing, just, uh, increasing the estimated revenue based on that grant. Um, the sheriff is what I already talked about with the contract with Newton Falls, um, exempted school district for the S R O. And then, um, the planning commission is the, um, Warren City Share the Fair Housing Project that.
Right, so they move it around and this is just you certifying that you got it.
Estimated rev, right, because those, those movements increase the estimated revenue.
Yes.
So, anytime the incre, the revenue is, um, increased, the estimated revenue is increased, we have to sign off to the budget.
Gotcha. Okay, relieving pla, receiving place on final monthly report for May for the dog kennel. Number eight, adopt the resolution to change the township lines of Bezetta Township. To make said township lines identical and whole in part with the limits of the city of Cortland, Ohio reflecting an annexation of approximately nine tons of an acre of land adjacent and contiguous to the city and located in Bezetta Township. This is, uh, the walnut run development. Something from a few years ago, they're just cleaning it up, uh, that, that they have to do for O R C every so many years when they adjust that. Uh, number nine, concur with the Trumbull County Engineers to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits for fleet vehicles to transport aggregate. This is, uh, R W Sidley, is that cement, can I imagine?
Yes, um, this is a renewal permit for.
Ten, concur with Trumbull County Engineer for Gero Transportation.
Gero's applying for a steel total permit, there today will be a total of two several of those locations.
Okay, and that's Steve Burberry from the Engineers Department answering that. My fault, sorry about that. Grant permission to county engineer to close the road listed Painesville Warren State Road located in Soullington between Dota East and Library Osborne, which can be closed from June twelfth to August twenty fifth. And the recommended detour is west on three oh five, north on five thirty four.
Burberry from the Engineers Office, this is to close the, the road, um, Soullington Township out by five thirty four, they're gonna be.
Twelve, right away permits. Carabuente, Western Reserve Port Authority, Steven Sherd, Dominion Energy Ohio, Dominion Energy Ohio.
Uh, Steve Burberry with the Engineers Office, these per, right away permits, um, adjusted by companies or individuals to work in the right of way. Um, Carabuente is getting some pipe for driveway access. Running township, the Port Authority, um, putting some in a ditch property they own by the airport for some farming access. Sheer is in Brookfield Township and he's, um, typing in some frontage ditch in front of his home. For Dominion Energy Ohio, they are replacing some gas line in Liberty. Other project is.
Okay, authorized clerk to board the Trumbull County Commissioners to advertise for sealed bids for True West Park Avenue, Auston Warren Road resurfacing project, project partially funded by eighty percent surface transportation block grant obtained through East State Regional Council governments. Project consists of resurfacing of West Park Avenue. No county general revenue required.
Um, this, Steve Burberry again from the Engineers Office, this is a federal aid project, so eighty percent of the money. Permit, um, to resurface the roads, the remainder. Avenue will be resurfaced from Austin Towne Warren for the denial city limits. And Austin Town Road will be resurfaced from the first town limits to Salt Springs Road, and then again. Or in city limits. Our engineers designed this in-house. Reflecting the project as well, so their wages and everything will be also reimbursed at eighty percent.
Okay, thank you. Authorized Trumbull County Engineer to revise the legal weight limit on the highway structure listed, express as coated truck type weight limit in tons, uh, to, to, to Moore Ray and Mecca Township.
Yeah, this is Steve Burberry again. This, um, Mecca number two bridge was, um, had a five ton weight limit, so our, um, office and, and our workers did the repairs in-house and did the, the structure re, updated and it increased. Weight limits, axle, we will be fifteen ton axle, eighteen ton four axle, eighteen ton five, nineteen ton six axle. Before it was five ax, or five tons for every.
Fifteen, approve the state fiscal year's twenty four, twenty five biannual subgrant agreement binding between Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, Department of Medicaid, Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and Children's Services Board for period effective July one twenty three through June twenty five. Agreement necessary in order for Ohio Department of Job and Family Services to provide necessary state, federal funding in Trumbull County Children's Services for the provision of child welfare services to the children and families of Trumbull County.
Now, we have fiscal direct with Children's Services. Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Department of Medicaid are, um, pass-through entities for federal funds received from the federal government. We are the sub-receipient of those funds, this agreement is necessary in order for those to see, um, after federal funding as, to us as unique, um, services. So, this allows us to receive over five hundred dollars a year.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sixteen, accept the resignation of Mrs. Chelsea Durman from the position of General Clerk one with Trumbull County Commissioners Office effective June sixteenth.
Um, Alex, Stephen Johnson Bush, human resources director, not much to this one. Um, Miss Chelsea Durman came to us a couple of months back uh, and she has found another position that feels will suit her better outside of town.
Okay, and we wish her the best of luck.
Yeah.
Number seventeen, authorize, uh, oh, with that, um, when would you anticipate we're gonna post that?
Well, that's gonna be a conversation with, uh, Miss Paula Vodaclot on if she feels her department needs to propose that immediately or when. Um, currently she's still training one general clerk, a scheduler, uh, so I know they've got a lot on their plate. Um, so I will leave that up to the department head to tell me when she feels like she's ready to get that job posted.
Okay, you anticipating that someday?
Yep, I'm sure it'll be coming.
Number seventeen, authorized border commissioners of Trumbull County, Ohio to write a letter of support to the Northeast County Farm Bureau consisting of Asheville, Geogee Lake and Trumbull County, farm bureaus on the application for rural and agricultural technology consultant pursuit through broadband Ohio and Department of Job Development Digital Inclusion Grant Application. This is basically, uh, to bring broadband out to the farmers, bring it out to the rural areas and something that was asked from, uh, Mandy Orrhood with the Farm Bureau via, um, emails to the commissioners and probably Julie. And, um, read this too, okay? Uh, duh, 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 duh. This is from Mandy. Policies of the Farm Bureau, the backbone of the organization, they provide framework through which we advocate for family, community and food security. They help guide efforts to address rural community issues, issues such as regulations, funding, public education services, environmental protection, animal care, healthcare, landowners' rights and community planning. These policies are used to develop programs, projects and advocacy at the state level and federal levels. Just as importantly, are used to help guide the yearly plan for work with the county Farm Bureau volunteers. Uh, we're asking to provide input on the issues and policies you think need attention. So, this is also something where, for Farm Bureau members and community leaders, there is a survey also, this is, uh, the survey. It'll be posted on the Commissioner's website if you want to have some input on the future direction of the Farm Bureau. Um, you can go to the Commissioner's website and see the survey, take the survey online, I already did mine, I got the same letter. And, uh, so we support the Farm Bureau in every which way possible. This is something in this, uh, resolution that we have, where this letter of support that we, uh, Commissioners are proud to, do support anything we can do to help bring more money in, especially to our rural and agricultural parts of the community. Um, I'm happy to work with, uh, Planning Commission, the other commissioners and anybody that we can to, uh, increase their funding. So, this is just one little way that we can show support and hopefully the state sees it and, and gives, uh, our Farm Bureau chapter a, a nice chunk for our local farmers. Any more on that, Julie? Well, Martha Yoder.
I, I will be sending a letter of support as well, they, they requested from the auditor's office and I'll be.
Perfect, any, any letters before we get from any community leaders, uh, whether rural or urban, uh, supports that. Paula?
Paula Vodaclot, for, uh, I believe, uh, this Orrhood needs this as soon as possible, so after, I'll have the- the letter is written. And it will be up for the board to sign after they've voted on tomorrow, so then we'll get it right back to her.
Perfect.
And it's her tomorrow, thank you.
Okay, number eighteen, authorize Trumbull County Planning Commission with concurrence from the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Office to accept the irrevocable letter of credit, number four, four, three, in lieu of a maintenance bond resolution, number two, twenty-three, nine, final plot for stills estates, plot number five, Skyline Lane Dedication, section thirty-six, Allen Township issued by Farmers National Bank, for a period of two years through November twenty-one of twenty-four, in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars for the water line improvements completed for forestills, plot number five. That kind of explains that we went over this at the, one of the last meetings, something real similar to this, right?
Yes.
Okay. Authorize Trumbull County Planning Commission with concurrence from Trumbull County Engineers to accept the irrevocable letter of credit, uh, in lieu of maintenance bond, final plot for stills estate, Allen Township, for a period of two years, March, uh, up to March second, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for roadway drainage improvements completed for forestills, plot number five. Goes along with that, one's water line, the other's for roadway drainage improvements. And then, twenty, authorize Trumbull County Planning Commission with concurrence from the Trumbull County Engineers Office to accept the irrevocable line of credit, forestills estate, for uncompleted work value at twenty-five thousand dollars, two-hundred percent of twelve thousand five hundred, located with forestills, plot number five. Line of credit remains open until such time it's released in writing by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners after inspection and approval is given by the Trumbull County Engineer for uncompleted work specified in the attached letter dated March second, twenty twenty-three. All required improvements shall be completed by developer within two years for the date of final plot approval. By the Planning Commission, unless such time has been requested by Skyline Developers, Trumbull County Engineer granted. This was something that came up last week also, or two weeks ago? As far as who is following up with these, uh, from past ones that we've done, how do we know that they're up so we can release them and do that?
This is the new.
This is, I know this is a new one, but it's just the whole concept of that.
I heard, uh, um, the one that they've talked about for forestills, number four. What, uh, if it's, if they're talking about one that was years ago, um.
Are there old ones out there pending that we should be releasing from the past possibly, or not?
Well, there's one, forestills number four. It's for a performance bond, open performance bond by, oh, downline, all is released by the authority and. So we've been in community. Dirty and. Weeks ago. Understand they're going.
But it'll go engineer to the Planning Commission, Julie Green to you?
No, we, we mon- we monitor the, the bonds.
Okay.
Um, and in this case, they didn't complete the work, we're going to pull the bond, um, and we'll work with you in the.
Thank you. Hope we have sensitive microphones on those things. Uh, twenty-one, concur with Trumbull County Planning Commission award a contractor, Stephen Lesko Junior, in the amount of thirty-one thousand two eighty for the West Farmington Village Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program for three additional LMI households benefiting income-qualified owner-occupied households, and authorize Board of Commissioners to enter into contract agreement with Stephen Lesko Junior in order to meet the rules and regulations of the CDBG and HSTS programs. His award is contingent upon review and approval from O E P A. Okay, understandable, and who, who reaches out to O E P A? Julie Greenwell, okay. Twenty-two, amend the agenda item dated April nineteenth, Journal Volume one fifty-six, page two five six three five, per the request of Diane Siskelic Jerkovic, Senior Levy Administrator and Michael Salamoni, Transit Administrator, to commit two hundred thousand dollars for disabled transportation from sales tax fund to fund transportation annually for the next two years, beginning December one, twenty twenty-two, to November thirty, twenty twenty-four. These funds provide countywide transportation to Trumbull County Disabled Residents during both non-grant periods and grant periods, which need local match for the Ohio Department of Transportation fifty-three-ten grant funds from December one, twenty twenty-two through November thirty, twenty twenty-three. The required twenty percent local match dollars estimated for the Ohio Department of Transportation fifty-three-ten grant funds is thirty thousand twenty-seven dollars, with the remaining balance of one hundred sixty-nine thousand nine seventy-three for countywide disabled transportation. If there are, if ODOT fifty-three-ten grant is not received from December one, twenty-three to November twenty-four, the entire two hundred thousand amount will fund countywide disabled transportation. The multiple, so this is the match that we have to do to qualify for the fifty-three-ten.
If I can clarify, this is Diane from the Senior Levy Administration Office. We needed to do this in order to provide clarification for the Trumbull County Auditor's Office. These were prior committed funds from beginning December twenty twenty-two through November of twenty twenty-four. The amendment is necessary in order to clarify what money is used during the grant period and what money is used out of non-grant period, between the money that was committed for two hundred thousand dollars for the disabled, and also Agenda Item number twenty-three is the same, except that's dealing with the senior levy portion of senior transportation. Just raking it out between non-grant and grant.
Martha, you, do you understand that?
Yes.
You guys are in correlation with this?
Right, we're doing it to make sure that it's clear, that's, it's just a clarification, that's why the amendment is required.
Yeah, there's a notice, Bob, and said amendment is necessary to estimate local match dollars for ODOT fifty-three-ten grants, countywide transportation, and to provide clarification to the Trumbull County Auditor's Office. Worked with, uh, staff members for a couple days to make sure that they language that we have here is in agreement with the Auditor's.
Just your judgment. Twenty-four, enter in the water service agreement with City of Niles for Trumbull County Southeast Public Water System. This agreement should provide bulk water for the southeast, uh, public water system located in Brookfield, Hubbard, Liberty, and Vianna Township. This, uh, agreement executed July second, two thousand and three, set to expire in July first, twenty twenty-three, show up a term of ten years from the beginning, July second, twenty twenty-three, to July one, twenty thirty-three, with option to renew the agreement for an additional ten years on written notification by the county to the city one year prior to the expiration. It's further recommendation to sanitary engineer and subject to review by the prosecutor's office. I hate that line at the end of these things.
Yes.
Where do we sit with that?
Uh, Gary Newbrot, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer, uh, Commissioner, as far as the prosecutor's office, we already have concurrence on that, I think I attached it when I sent it in to Paula.
Okay.
Uh, but the purpose of this is, uh, our bulk water for our southeast water district, which includes, um, areas in Brookfield, Hubbard, Liberty, and Vianna. Uh, it is set to expire here on July the first. Uh, we have been negotiating with the City of Niles for, I don't know, the last six to nine months regarding this, and, uh, they have increased their bulk water rate to us. Uh, they used to be on an old tiered rate, where you pay so much for this many thousand and then so much after, you, you go past this amount, then it goes to a, a lower rate once you buy more water, and, uh, and that would take place every month, your usage per month. Now, the, Niles has got completely away from their tiered system, so they just went to a straight, uh, tiered system, and, uh, their, uh, their current inside rate just went up to four dollars and sixty-two cents per thousand, okay? Now, we used to pay one point two times that tiered rate, but now we're only paying point eight-eight times the inside rate. Uh, this came after some calculations between us and Niles, so our bulk rate is point eight-eight of the Niles inside rate, which, uh, brings us to four oh six per thousand gallons, is what our bulk rate is going to be. Uh, but based on, uh, two thousand twenty-two, uh, flow data, it will result in an approximate a hundred and thirty thousand dollar per year increase in the annual water bill to the City of Niles.
Okay, let me ask a stupid question a new guy would ask.
Okay.
Why do we buy from Niles instead of buying direct at the tap from M V S D?
Uh, well, this has to be routed through Niles, the water here, so it has to go through Niles' uh, distribution infrastructure in order to get to us. So that, that's the main reason.
We don't have a direct source right to us from the water source.
Yes, yes, Mineral Ridge is different, but this one, this one has to go through Niles' system in order to get to us.
So Vianna goes through Niles also?
Yes, yes.
So it all routes out of there and Hubbard?
Yes, I have the map here if you want.
I'm just looking for the layman's exam before, to try to understand a little better.
The southeast system includes, uh, the Brook, uh, Brookfield here, the Ford Township here, and the Hubbard, which is much smaller down here.
Right.
But it's all fed right through here. This is only an emergency connection into the Holland system, okay? But that all has to get, the Holland system all has to get routed through Niles too. But it has to come through Niles, and the M V S D is all the way down here. That water has to get through Niles before it can get to us at that pump station, tank, and master meter right there, and that's the entire feed for.
Gotcha. That makes a lot clearer sense.
Okay.
So be remiss unless I got your opinion.
I find it difficult to understand why there's an increase from M V S D through Niles. When M V S D has been proven by the State of Ohio D P A that they, they're one of about fifty water sources in the State of Ohio that provide water that contains an excess of microplastics in their water. Um, also in their water are P F A Ss, which are the forever chemicals, which they have yet to come up with a solution for, but yet they're providing us water that contains both of those items. Seems unfair until they can give us water that is totally clean, that we should be paying an increase.
Is that the Niles issue first and foremost?
Well, as far as the quality of the water, that would be an M V S D issue. Now, I, uh, did go to their, uh, this recent board meeting last month, and they were discussing P F A S, and this, this is, uh, standards brought out, uh, through the U S E P A down on all water, uh, providers, and they have given them a, uh, exceedance limit of four parts per trillion. And every water source in the country is, uh, being challenged by such a slow, a low, a low threshold of that P F A S. I mean, they're, and the testing on the M V S D water, they are just slightly above that, and they are making every effort they can to try to, uh, find a solution to that problem. Do you think of four parts per trillion, there are some estimates, and it would be less than ten fifty-five gallon drums in the entirety of Lake Erie. Uh, that, that's how much we're talking of what four parts per trillion is. So, uh, about five hundred and fifty gallons in all of Lake Erie, that is, so, uh, no, that, that is what the U S E P A standard is right now, four parts per trillion on P F A S. Did it change? Yes, yes, it just came out here in the past, in the past six months, I want to say. It was under, uh, review for a long time, but now they, they have formalized it at four parts per trillion. So it's not just M V S D, it is, from what I understand, is about every water source in the country, uh, by reading the trade magazines, that it is, uh, pretty much an impossible standard to, uh, satisfy.
Kind of like the, um, nitrogen thing we dealt with earlier?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. Uh, number twenty-five, this is a big one, so I'm going to read it, and we got to prick your ears up on this one. Adopt the resolution establishing the Trumbull County Combined Water Districts. Whereas this board, by resolution adopted on the dates here and after indicated, has provided for the establishment of this county the following water districts, which you're hearing collectively referred to as the existing districts. Bezetta Champion District, Braceville Township District, Allen Water District, Mineral Ridge Water District, Mosquito Creek Water District, Southeast Water District, Warren Township Water District. These were all established between nineteen seventy and two thousand and eleven. Whereas this board has received recommendation that the territory within the existing districts be consolidated into a new single district for the reason the creation of such a new district would simplify the basic water district organization of this county, would give greater recognition of the factors of population trends and present and prospective land use, would facilitate the planning for the construction improvement, extension, management, operation, and maintenance of water distribution infrastructure, and reduce the cost thereof as well as improve cooperative efforts with municipalities, would allow more efficient economic cooperation of water distribution facilities, would assist in the delivery of a safe and abundant source of drinking water, which would assist a broader degree of, greater degree of health to the residents of this county and affected areas, and will provide for the orderly and related development of such areas. And resolution establishing Trumbull County Combined Water District. Whereas, this board has determined that such recommendations should be adopted for the reasons aforementioned, and as read also on such determination, this board finds it necessary to establish the new water district to be known as the Trumbull County Combined Water District, and to be comprised of the territories within the existing districts. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Trumbull County, Section One, that for the purpose of preserving, protecting, and promoting the public health and welfare, this board does hereby lay out and establish and authorize to be maintained as of the state hereof, a new water district which should be known as the Trumbull County Combined Water District, which will have the combined boundaries of the existing districts. The boundaries of the combined water districts is hereby laid out and established and include all unincorporated areas within the following. Uh, beginning at a point which is southwest corner of Newton Township and extending north along the western boundaries of Newton, Braceville, Suddington, Farmington, and Mesopotamia Townships, to northwest corner of Mesopotamia Township. That's extending west upon the northern boundaries of Mesopotamia, Lowfield, Green, Gustavus, and Kinsman Township, to the northeast corner of Kinsman Township. That's extending south along the eastern boundaries of Kinsman, Johnson, Hartford, Brookfield, and Hubbard, to the southeast corner of Hubbard Township. That's extending west along the southern borders of Hubbard Township, Liberty Township, Wethersfield Township, Lordstown Village, Newton Township, to the southwest corner of Newton Township through the place of beginning. The boundaries of the combined water districts shall not include some areas bordering on the municipal limits and service by the Trumbull County Cities and Villages described in service area agreements between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and respective governments of the affected cities and villages. Section Two, that the Trumbull County Combined Water District is herein described and provided Section two, that the Trumbull County Combined Water District is herein described and provided for shall be created as of the date of this resolution and shall be in effect for the purpose of budget procedures from and after such date. Provided however that the budgetary allocations appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-two for the existing districts shall be deemed to be budgetary allocations and appropriations for such fiscal year for the Trumbull County Combined Water District. Boy, you're busy, Gary. Section three, that the existing districts shall be the same as hereby dissolved as of the date of this resolution. Since the boundaries of the Trumbull County Combined Water District as created by this resolution include all the territory located in such existing districts and such existing districts shall cease to exist and operate as of the date of this resolution for the purpose of the operation and maintenance of county-owned water district facilities therein and the purpose of the accrual for any county water rents and permit fees. Provided however that nothing herein contained shall affect or impair the validity of any actions taken or authorized to be taken prior to the date of this resolution with respect to the existing districts. Provided further that until otherwise ordered by this board and existing districts shall be true to the sub-districts of the Trumbull County Combined Water District to be identified by their respective names and numbers, if any. Section four, subject to the provisions of section five, hereof, all monies received in payment of county water rents and county permit fees for water supply facilities serving the Trumbull County Combined Water District, including any such rents and charges which may now be on deposit in the funds of the existing districts which may have accrued there too, as to the date of this resolution which properly be transferred shall be paid into a water fund as may be appropriate for the Trumbull County Combined Water District. As such funds are hereby created and established effective as of the date of this resolution. Monies deposited in each such fund shall be paid first, the cost of the management, maintenance and operation of county and facilities serving the Trumbull County Combined Water District. Second, payment of the interest on the principal of any outstanding debt incurred on the construction of county-owned facilities serving the Trumbull County Combined Water District. And third, enlargement of extension or replacement of county facilities serving the district. Nothing contained in this resolution shall be construed as to effect the special assessments on capital charges that have been levied for the construction of county and water districts serving any and existing districts and which have been delivered to the county auditor and are lien on property or the proceedings taken in connection herewith this board finding and determining improvements for which assessments and capital charges were levied have been and will continue to be of the same special benefit for the properties assessed therefore and that such properties will continue to receive the same service of Trumbull County Combined Water District as was received in such existing districts. The validity and status of outstanding bonds or loans of this county issued in anticipation of collection of special assessments, capital charges to finance the cost of constructing water district facilities serving the existing districts or the rights of the holders of such bonds and loans. And any and all assessments, capital charges anticipated with such bonds and loans shall be and remain pledged to the payment thereof. The validity or status of any pending proceedings for the construction of water district facilities to serve the existing districts or any assessments or capital charges to be levied therefore in the proceeding related to such facilities to levy any such assessments or capital charges to pay the cost of construction thereof and the issuance of notes and bonds and loans to finance such cost of construction shall after the date of the resolution be taken under designation of Trumbull County Combined Water District with appropriate reverence to the former water district under which the proceedings were begun. This board further finding and determining that such facilities will where assessments or capital charges not levied thereof be of the same special benefit for the properties to be assessed or subject to capital service charge purpose and that such properties will receive the same service from the Trumbull County Combined Water District as would be received from the existing districts. Validity of outstanding bonds and loans of the county under authority of the Highway Guide Code sixty-one oh three oh eight. And the revenue pledged to each issue of bonds and loans shall be segregated and hold solely for the payment of such principal, interest and other requirements on the same expenses of operating and maintaining the facilities constructed with the proceeds of each such shall be segregated from those of other water facilities of this county. Breakdown. Any existing contract for water supply or distribution services to or by any of the existing districts and any and all such contracts filed within the terms be affected in particular geographic areas or areas to which they relate as if this resolution had not been adopted. It being hereby found and determined further that such contracts and obligations created there will in no way be altered or otherwise impaired by the creation of Trumbull County Water District. Basically, the next step, which I will summarize, is the water rates are gonna stay the same. Whatever they're paying now in the district, the existing district, the water rates will stay the same. It's just a name change and brings all the districts under one umbrella. So you don't have to ima- imagine separate funds, separate designations. Basically, instead of running seven businesses under one roof, they're all the same business. But there still will be the existing charges that they are used to pay. And there's no rate increase by changing the name. It's just bringing everything standardized under one company, under one name.
Yes, Commissioner.
Anything else I need to add to that?
Uh, no, I think he summarized it pretty good. Uh, this is, uh, the main objective here is that, uh, we have seven existing financial water districts. Some of them are having more financial difficulty than others. And by combining, uh, the financial resources of all seven into one, it is a lot easier to manage, uh, uh, operation and maintenance costs, uh, uh, basically, uh, financial, uh, effort needed by, uh, the accounting personnel. It should be, uh, decreased seven, by a factor of, uh, one, one, seven to one. So, um...
And then it'll help down the road too with cost averaging some rates too, which not scare people. There are some people paying very low rates, there's some people paying high. Eventually, by blending together, we can come up with possibly down the road one standardized rate to make simplicity for all the businesses.
Yeah, yeah, tha- that's always been something since I started as sanitary engineers in two thousand four. The fact that we have these varying rates across all the districts. You can see that it, it varies anywhere from six eighty-six in Howland, uh, up to, uh, uh, what do we got, nine fifty-six out in the Mosquito Creek District. And I always thought that was a, uh...
Right next to the water source you're paying the most.
Yes, yes. Uh, so there, there's a lot of different factors into how these rates eventually evolved to where they're at. But they had to have seven different, uh, rate studies done on, on each of the districts in order to arrive at these rates. As you can see, we haven't had a rate increase in six out of the seven since two thousand fifteen. Uh, two thousand nineteen, we had to make an adjustment out in the Braceville District using a big blueprint project. Uh, but, uh, uh, all the, all the, uh, customers except for the two hundred ninety in Braceville have not seen any rate increases since two thousand fifteen. And if there is a rate increase, uh, in the coming, uh, years, uh, we will, uh, make it so that we can get down to one standard countywide rate for the county's water districts.
Which is fair.
Yes, yes.
It shouldn't be fair that a guy pays one rate, his neighbor across the street in a different township pays a different rate and they're getting it from the same source in the same place. Probably because politics somewhere along the line got involved in here somehow. And this kind of removes, I believe, politics out of the equation and just lets the real cost of science dictate the price and, and... I think that's a good thing. Uh, so if someone that lives in a small area may not be penalized by being in a small area, um, just because of where he lives too. So, I like this idea. I went over this with you. Um, feedback from anybody? I think Jim Misaki and I could've done this in one paragraph, but you took it for granted. So I, I appreciate the extra work and dotting every I and crossing every T, uh, in this thing. But I'm sure there's, it's not bulletproof, so we'll, uh, defend it a lot of ways. But I think this is the route to go. You, um, and I commend you on the idea.
Okay. Well, Commissioner, it's also something that was being tossed around as sanitary engineers all the way back in the eighties, uh, from the files that I saw. So, um, this, you know, it's just al- always been a thought. We need to combine financially, combine the water districts and we're finally to that stage.
And they're still gonna be segregated or separated, but they just may be a different classification under the parent name, under the main, the main name. Maybe A, B, C, D, whatever, or number one, two, three. But at least it's, uh...
Okay. And I will admit that all the verbiage in here, a lot of it came from when we combined, uh, the sewer district, uh, a couple of years ago. We combined the mosquito and the, uh, metro into the combined. So I sort of used that as a blueprint for, uh, converting it to a combined water district. I didn't just kind of pull all this right out of my head, so.
Your father wasn't real happy to take all the stuff that I made. He's a true... Okay. We'll see how this...
Uh, uh, one thing I noticed, Paula, there was a typo.
One typo on all that?
One.
Section four. Section four of the existing districts which may have accrued may now be on deposit. Section four, there's many and it should be may.
So for fifty years, we were doing it one way, now we're gonna standardize it finally for fifty years.
Yes, yes. And, and I can tell you when we combined the sewer districts, that relieves a whole lot of headaches a little bit. And I think this will also.
Plus, I need a new map on tomorrow.
Well, we still service the same areas. And although it is, uh, financially called the Trumbull County Combined Water District, the EPA still recognizes them as seven different public water systems. So our reporting to the EPA, we still have to do seven times the work on that. Well, there's a seven, warning for all seven public water systems.
Right.
Now, the, uh, State Road, uh, pump station where we're going to supply the Braceville District with Warren water, we can combine the Braceville and the Champion Bezetta Public Water Systems. So we're gonna go down to six public water systems shortly. So there's seven.
Yeah. Good job. That's a lot of work there. Wish Marle was here to discuss it or, or the Commissioner for...
Oh, hopefully he'll be here tomorrow.
Okay. Number twenty-six. I'll have you run all this stuff by the prosecutor already with the name change and the logistics of that and legality.
Yes, I, as a matter of fact, I got a letter from, uh, from, uh, Samantha Monroe addressing exactly this and I sent it over. Yeah, is that it?
Yes.
And it attaches Jim Brutz's letter, who said years ago that, yes, this is completely legal what we're doing.
Okay, and for the, uh, for the record, I do have a copy of that that, uh, Paula gave me. Make sure, oh, the Commissioners get that if you could.
It was, you know, these packets were emails, but I can print it for everybody in this front 'cause I'll make sure that, um, Mr. Counsel, I just forward it, uh, he had it all within his best put on the agenda.
Uh, this is pretty much a, a historic moment for sanitary engineers, so.
It kinda is. I mean, it is a big deal.
Yes, yes.
It's not a little thing. That's what we tomorrow is.
Yeah.
It's a big deal. So what do you think? Absolutely, she says. Okay. Number twenty-six, establish a fund or establish the creation of the Trumbull County Combined Water District Fund known as Fund Six Oh One. For use by the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. Funds to be used for the maintenance and operation of the Trumbull County Water Distribution Systems. That's easy to do, Martha, correct?
Yes.
Another line. Twenty-seven. To enter into a lease agreement between the City of Warren and the Board of Commissioners of Trumbull County. Whereas the City of Warren owns and manages the described premises contained in Exhibit A and is desired in the interest of securing the maximum use and enjoyment of the facility in the City of Warren, Ohio, that the described premises contained in Exhibit A be operated by Trumbull County. It's also deemed to be in the best interest of the public that the county assume and carry on the maintenance and operations of the described premises described in Exhibit A and attached here to owned by the lease, the leasor. Uh, the, the, we're gonna lease it for ten dollars a year and other valuable considerations received by Trumbull County consideration of mutual agreement of the parties. City of Warren leases to Trumbull County, Ohio. Terms are, uh, ten years commencing June one, twenty twenty-three and expiring May thirty-one, twenty thirty-three, unless terminated sooner. Improvements in use, the lessee will rehabilitate, improve and maintain the described premises contained in Exhibit A. Uh, they'll maintain and provide janitorial services, supplies, light, landscaping and other necessary equipment of operation of said, uh, premises. We will provide, the lessee will select and provide the employees for the operation of premises and will be the sole determiner of policies of operation. At any time it can be terminated, thirty days with written notice. Agreement can only be mutually amended by a written addendum signed and executed by parties named herein. Lessee shall not assign any of its rights to a subletter without the written consent of the leasor. Lessee shall at all times ensure the premises. If a dispute between the parties arises, uh, cannot be obtained within two months. Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas shall have the jurisdiction over both parties. Court cross shall be borne, both parties equally. Any section, sentence, clause, phrase of force of the agreement is held invalid by court. Uh, determined in full force. And this basically talks about everything except for what it is. But I assume this is the Veterans War Memorial?
That's correct. Uh, Herm Brewer, Trumbull County Veteran's Service Commission. Um, so we've been working with the city for a legal remedy to allow our office to be able to, um, provide for proper care and maintenance, uh, of the facility. Uh, the property which is owned by the city, but the monuments have been placed by private entities and donors. Um, so, uh, we had, uh, approached the county prosecutors probably about three years ago. We were looking for a legal transfer of the property, but we ran into a stumbling block on locating the, um, the original deeds for the property. Um, we worked diligently on that, going back to the seventeen hundreds and unfortunately weren't able to locate that. So this creates that legal, um, legal means for us to be able to do that. Um, I've been working with the, uh, county law director and our county prosecutors. County Prosecutor Jason Toth, uh, reviewed the lease agreement in Exhibit A, which is a, a map of the property. Um, his only caveat was to, uh, check with Corsa. Um, and Alex got me the name for Mark Rossi. Mark Rossi and I have been in contact. He assured me that, uh, the property would be covered by the insurance that the county already has.
At no cost.
At no cost, correct, yeah.
For liability coverage only.
Exactly, yes, so...
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, so, um, within that, um, his question was, are the monuments going to be covered? The monuments are not currently covered with the exception of the World War Two statue, uh, which was assi- and I, I believe that the private entities were actually paying that premium, but I gotta check that detail with the city. So the one thing, I do have a, an email out to, uh, the Sa- Safety Services Director to get these ordinance numbers and resolution numbers and the dates that they were passed, um, so that Paula can get that into the entry as well.
Should we state in here somewhere what it is? As, as, as reading it this way and journalizing, it doesn't really say the...
Yep.
The location, I mean, it has City Warren and Board of Commissioners' address on here.
Yeah.
There's nothing here that says what's sitting there or what it is.
Yeah, and it, it probably, um, there could be some helpful language that says that it'll be directed to the Veteran's Service Commission.
Maybe Mr. Brewer, just the first, um, paragraph here. We could just put a couple of sentences there if you would help me and we'll be clarified. So in ten years, we know what exactly, just we could do that.
And, and on it too, is this, is this something that your department's gonna be maintaining and, and doing? Should we put that in there too, so it just doesn't assume that it's go hard, has to go there and clean and take care of? Should we sign somewhere in here?
Exactly.
The county, but under the supervision or management of Trumbull County Veteran's Services?
Absolutely, yeah.
Can we do that as well also?
Sure.
And just, just for clarification again, Herm Brewer from Trumbull County Veteran's Service Commission. There are things by statute that fall technically under the Board of County Commissioners that the county Veterans Office, um, has assumed, one being memorial day flags, rods and markers that are placed on the graves of veterans. So we already are, um, taking on some of those responsibilities. This would just kind of be an extension. One of the other things that we have clarified within the agreement that our County Veteran's Service Commission Board was that this would be the tr- uh, whi- which it is already designated that way with signage. that is the Trumbull County Veterans Memorial. Um, so that way, if other municipalities would like to approach us, this is specifically for the county, not necessarily each individual municipality. Just for, you know, any, any, any confusion for the future.
Yeah, that's definitely one you get credit for too, so that's why I would kind of brand it as. Yeah, the county owns it just like every other department or whatever, but this should have your fingerprint on it and logo and, you know, sign and things like that.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
Questions on that, it's another historic thing, it's pretty big.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good job. Twenty-eight, to rescind the agenda item dated June one, twenty twenty-three. Appointed Ms. Michelle Miller as a member of Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board for the additional term of Ms. Jane Bootwell of Cortland. Her term was to commence June one and then June thirtieth. This was something that we appointed her part of their recommendation, and she decided she didn't want the appointment. So, um, she was never sworn in, so we're just rescinding the thing instead of accepting resignation on this one. And then we hope to have another candidate soon. Then to reappoint Ms. Carol Henderson as a member of the Trumbull County Mental Health and Recovery Board for an additional four-year term commencing July one and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. This is one of the Mental Health and Recovery Board seats, so this was given to us by April. They picked the board member on this one. The last one, I believe, was a pick that was up the commissioners, yes?
I spoke with Miss April this morning. I believe this is also a commissioner's appointment, what I, which I did receive from. April did reach out, uh, Ms. Caraway couldn't make it today, she had two meetings back to back. She is going to, she has some applications to give you all for another appointment. There is another, uh, appointment open. I'm not sure if it's her appointment or the board's, so. But I, I was incorrect. This is, I believe, a commissioner's appointment.
But Ms. Henderson is a current member, she's vice president now. And hopes to be president at the next board meeting, her next term. So she comes highly recommended and she's current and active. Um, okay? And then twenty-eight, I guess we'll go off to submit names or do what they need to do to get more people for that one. All right, number thirty. Go on executive session pursuant to O R C to discuss the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, and compensation of public employee specifically for the vacant position of Trumbull County Nine One One Director. Finally here, ready for this.
We are.
Moment here.
Alexandra, Steven Johnson Bush, Human Resources Department. Uh, we need to go into this tomorrow to allow all three commissioners to, you know, their interview comments. Uh, we need to have that compensation packages. I can't make an offer to any candidate, whether, whichever way we choose, until we've done that. So I think that there's some confusion, maybe by some commissioners thinking that we're gonna walk out of there and say we're gonna hire X, Y, Z. It is not gonna be able to work like that. I have to do drug tests still, I have to do background checks. You guys, this is just to get the ball rolling. I was asked to provide information for this executive session. The information is, you guys interview them, you need to come to your H R director with who you're recommending, so that way I can do the next part and get this ball rolling. Thank you.
Okay, and then to reconvene from executive session after that. Now, we don't need to, if we make an offer, that's just something we do. And then that'll be something that'll be brought to us.
Yes, I will put it on as an actual agenda item to hire whoever it may be. Uh, once we have background checks done, uh, drug tests done, that kind of stuff, and a compensation agreed upon.
We don't have to do a journal entry to offer it to somebody pending background.
Not right now, I would never bring anybody to the board to approve until I have everything fully baked. And I'm sure that that person's also gonna accept a potential offer. We don't wanna just go out there and throw out numbers and, hey, this is what the pitch is all to. This needs to be a fluent conversation if we wanna do this the right way.
Okay, perfect, all right, good. All right, number thirty-two perplexes me a little bit. To accept the resignation, Mr. Ed Agler has volunteered for the Trumbull County Agriculture and Family Education Center. Of course, we'd like to thank Ed for his many years of faithful dedicated service to the Ag Center and wish him many years of health and happiness. But I don't know, we have plenty of volunteers in many departments. And when someone retires and resigns from veteran services helping out or any other departments, do we accept the resignation type of thing? Do we journalize, do we do it publicly? I mean, there's, we've got probably dozens, if not hundreds, of volunteers over the past decade or whatever that served Trumbull County in many capacities. I don't know that we've ever do this for volunteers, is this?
Alex, Steven Johnson Bush, I'm not gonna sit here and, you know, pretend this was not my agenda item. I, I did not put this on. Um, I ran through a conversation with our prosecutor's office as well as Clemens Nelson, who is our legal counsel. Uh, and I was told this is a slippery slope, because obviously we don't, um, discuss volunteers. We don't journalize volunteers, we don't journalize them being, you know, volunteers. We don't journalize them not being volunteers. Um, so if this is something that we wanna start doing, uh, we gotta be consistent here.
And I would, I would rather see this maybe diluting Ed Agler for his service to the county as he retires as a volunteer or something. That way maybe commending him, that way more of a commendation.
Which I agree.
For his service, rather than accept the resignation type of thing. I don't think it's, I don't think that fits here with this. I think that's more of a, we have a longtime dedicated volunteer, we wanna make note of it if they're no longer volunteering or moving on or pass away or whatever it is. Then we could.
Commend their service.
We could commend it, we could, we could, um.
Yes, yes, the proclamation would be a better way.
Proclamation or something for their service. I don't think this is the right route, but I'm one commissioner here today. Um, so I, I, it's kind of weird because it'll be on the agenda, but I really don't think this is the route to go. I'd rather, like Diane said, um, if a commendation for his service and thank him for his service, rather than, than do this, or this just kind of seems not as personal.
Maybe you can have a public discussion, public vote of cops, public discussion with the board tomorrow, how you wanna go forward with it. And I'll relook at my email to see, make sure that what I was told to do, that word was there. But, uh, if it was, I do need to, um, it'd have to be decided differently and a public discussion by the majority of the board.
Alex, Steven Johnson Bush, Human Resources Department. Um, I, I can attest to the fact that Paula was told to put this item on this way. Um, I would like to make that very clear for the record. She was told to put this on this way, not by Human Resources, but by another commissioner. So unfortunately today, we have one commissioner saying one thing, one commissioner saying another thing. So yes, tomorrow we need to definitely discuss this unfortunately as a board, uh, when you guys have a consensus. And I, I would agree that the word resignation is a slippery slope. I mean, it's for a volunteer. If we were, if it was an employee resigning, that's one thing. We don't have general action for these things. Um, with that being said, I think that we should commend his service, his public service. And I absolutely agree that we should say thank you and have a proclamation or whatever the case may be. But if you wanna start doing this, this is a process that we have to do for every single volunteer. The dog pound, at elderly services, at whatever the case may be. So this is a very slippery slope for us in this county.
Yep, and I hate that we have the debate of publicly.
I agree, I agree.
Um.
Thank you.
Which kind of, I don't want in any way, shape, or form, Mr. Agler feel like he's being kind of beat around in the.
Right.
The thing with this, and I'm not understanding because he's been an awesome guy. And we don't want, I don't want him tainted in any way with the process either.
Playing the devil's. Playing the devil's advocate here, just because, um, you know, we've got some designations going on. Any person that serves on a board, like I served on the transit board, that's a volunteer position. And you do accept resignations for that. So I'm just playing the devil's advocate here, so that, you know, seeing that, yes, we do, you do accept resignations for some volunteers already. Because any, most of the boards that you are pointing to, when you point to Mental Health Board or whatever, that's a voluntary position.
I, I understand that, but at the same time, a lot of those are put in there by O R C or policy.
Right, I get it, I, I absolutely agree. I, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Alexandra.
That's a great, uh, Alex, Steven Johnson Bush, Human Resources Department. I'm gonna have to shorten my name. Call yourself Alexandra. Can I just go by Alex, yeah. So I do agree with you, and I actually looked into that as well, auto reoder, I agree. But they're appointed per usually O R C to what commissioner says. So appointing somebody is different. We've, to an, to an actual board. We've never appointed a volunteer to work at the dog pound or to work at, you know what I mean? So, yes, do we have some room for improvement in a volunteer policy? Probably in the near future, if that's what the board decides they wanna do, is have a legitimate volunteer policy in how we, uh, recognize volunteers, how we bring on volunteers. Um, you know, but until we have that in place, I don't want him to feel like the test, if I'm being. I, I just feel like this feels a little bit achy.
I agree.
Um, and from a human resources perspective, I just, it doesn't sit well with me, but who am I? So I'm just giving my advice to the board as to what we've done and what we've looked into.
Perhaps.
I don't, I don't believe.
Well, he's not an employee. So he, we all have to remember that he's not an employee, so I can't, and I've legally looked into this with the prosecutor and with, you know, Clemens Nelson. I would love to say, you know, I would love to say that he was journalized as an employee, but I, I can't sit here and lie and say that. We looked in the archives, he was never journalized as an employee.
He's been here, like he's under the establishment, he's been here as long as we've been here. It seems like he was pre Commissioner Frenchco and Commissioner Cannon Lisa.
All three, correct.
And it was somewhere before that. I don't know when exactly, because there is no journal entry. Um, Ed would probably know when he came in and who he came in under. And unfortunately, you know, he's, he's not here for that. It really doesn't matter, he's been a longtime dedicated guy. He's been our act guy, the face of the, you know, the blink between the rural community and us for many, many years and, um, and like you said, commendation, absolutely.
I agree.
I hate to lose him. Um, but to do it this way, like you said, it does open the door for everyone else in that position. Um, that I don't know, we wanna tie that up, you know, with that. And then again, then it gets into what's a volunteer?
Correct.
What is covered under insurance, who's not? We just went through that with Diane's department.
Correct.
On a volunteer, and it was like, um, a million hoops we had to jump through.
Correct, I have to stress this to everybody. There's Fair Labor Standard Act, you know, there's, there's stuff that goes into this. I mean, human resources and a legal employer law entity that is, is bigger than us just saying this. I mean, we really have to assess the whole situation. I am not saying by any means, I mean, I'm devastated to lose Ed, I think we all are. And I think that we owe him a larger thank you than words could even express. But to put it that way is better than to say, you know, we're accepting a resignation for a volunteer. Um, you know, we can't go into an executive session if you're not an employee, that's just a matter of fact. But that would be another slippery slope.
And this was something, again, um, Commissioner Loy speaking again, this is something, again, that was inherited by the past Board of Commissioners.
For me as well, I had no, this was new to me.
And you, and Commissioner Frenchco and Commissioner Cannon Lisa, this was before them.
Right.
And they, they didn't know any differently, as I don't know any differently now. And it wasn't until now, when you went to pull the file, that we realized that the status thing of it. I just, when I got here, I just thought we had a Department of Agriculture.
I did too, I, I mean, I feel.
I didn't know any different, and apparently Commissioner Frenchco didn't know it either, and Commissioner Cannon Lisa didn't know it either, or, or did something differently, I, I don't know.
Commissioner, I have to look at the email. I believe volunteer is my word that I put, because I felt I was implying employee if I didn't put volunteer. So I can change whatever, but I would have to do that, uh, respectfully, right Commissioner Frenchco to ask her if I changed the wording, but I put the word volunteer because it didn't.
You're right, I.
I didn't want to imply to get, you know.
Well, I wouldn't wanna imply either. I wouldn't want, I would not want the board to imply that he is an employee because.
No, yeah, we couldn't put that, that's not.
For all intensive purposes, he's not an employee. So we have to be very, this is. It's gonna be up to the board how you wanna proceed. Like I said, the facts are the facts. Right now we have two different opinions, two different opinions on this matter. And I feel awful because this is a person. I mean, we really shouldn't be debating what we're, like, this is, this is a human being who's done a very good service for Trumbull County for twenty-seven plus years.
Absolutely.
So.
Was it that long?
Yeah.
Wow, isn't.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's awesome to have someone like that that's here for that long.
That's what I'm saying, this, this three days.
Than they were way back then.
Oh, I'm sorry, he actually said thirty-plus years. So twenty-seven was what, for some odd reason, I had in my head, but, um, and then from an H R perspective too, I wanna say this for the record, there's this, there's this, um, comment kind of being thrown out there that we need to get anything that this gentleman had on him. That's been taken care of, all, all these things have been taken care of, so I'm not really sure.
I don't understand that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, I don't understand that at all, but, okay. He's gonna be missed, bottom line is.
Yeah.
He's gonna be missed. Whether we will have another person in that capacity, I, I don't know. Um, I, I went there and met the staff there, met the people there. Um, he was the first person they saw when they walked in, people walked in the door, and he directed them to the right place. And he was, uh, a valuable link between the rural farming community and the different agencies there and the county. Um, and like you said, that is gonna be missed, but that's something where we as a county need to make sure that we reach out on our own in the same sense too, and make sure the whole county knows they're inclusive in county government, not just, you know, one entity or another. And, um, I think we're working on that, we're striving for that. Already with four H and the Ag, or, or the, uh, the Fair Board and, you know, the different bridges we're building now of the rural community, um, that we're gonna continue to do, you know, through, um, into the future. Or it's gonna be mandate, at least one of mine that we do that. And, and so, again, I'd like to see to say proclamation or thank you proclamation rather than the way it is worded here, I just, I don't understand this. Cause this was something that wasn't any of our faults. It wasn't, I mean, if anything, all three commissioners are, at any time are equally as guilty of the circumstances of what it is that we inherited without re, researching into it more or whatever. But just something that didn't need to come up till it came up, I guess. Any thoughts on that? Paula?
Our, our staff would always be happy and would provide a resolution, um, work and effort if we were provided some information. Here's, because I, I know.
Absolutely.
We'd see that, and any time maybe he could come and, at a time we'd be happy to do.
Sure, and there's different ways down the road or whatever, to commemorate his service and do things. And I'll be looking for opportunities for that myself. And, you know, always something to name or some, something, somewhere along the line for the work that he's done. And this is, uh, uh, I, I'll be trying to table this and amend tomorrow to change it to, uh, resolution instead of accepting resignation, this doesn't sit right with me.
Maybe I think that, that if we wanna present, to present at the fair.
I think that's a great idea.
That would be great.
Alex, that's a great idea.
That would be great at the fair meeting.
Yes.
Um, so I, as a matter of fact, if, if we can, one commissioner put it on there, I'll tell you now, then, for the meeting we have at the fair, uh, Paula, if you can put that on there, a commendation, uh, a proclamation thanking him for more than thirty years of dedicated service from the Board of Commissioners. And we can do that resolution at the fair in front of the Fair Board, in front of his peers, and make sure that Ed is there and accepting of it there, and make sure that we, we as commissioners make a big deal of it, and, and there and his, kind of in front, kind of hometown team a little bit.
In development.
Yeah, Martha, fantastic idea, and that's, that's, I'll be more than happy to sign that. And I'll be more than happy to give that to him with a big smile at the fair. Fantastic. Okay, now we just need to figure out this ugliness of this part of it, and then turn it into a big smile. Okay, that concludes everything for agenda for tomorrow. Mr. Masaki, I, I know I can't push anything forward as one commissioner, but can you check, I get a phone call this week from, was that a township? And they said they had another one in the pipeline from Posetta Township. And I don't remember seeing it on a spreadsheet. And I promised the trustees that I would look into it at a workshop today or tomorrow. And if there is one in the pipeline, then I'll ask tomorrow to move that one forward legal also. But I did not see anything Posetta-wise on the spreadsheet we had in the last two weeks. Like I said, I could have overlooked it, but it maybe just didn't make it to the spreadsheet yet. I know it was something they did like, um, mid-May or beginning of May, so. Okay, for the good of the order, anybody have anything, Julie? There is an East Gate thing in there somewhere. I remember seeing an East Gate once.
Yeah, quite a while ago.
I've been monitoring the emails that they sent in. They presented an AP.
And so did the Port Authority, and those are ones I think we, at least I'm looking for the ones that are township related, right out of the gate. The low hanging fruit ones, we tried to clear up. Some of the ones that had higher dollar qualities is not, we didn't tackle yet.
East Gate filed something like, uh, January ninth in this year.
Fifty thousand broadband?
Okay, that's all we do.
Yeah.
For a broadband, qualifications last week made it.
Is that something important to you to move forward? We can discuss that maybe next Tuesday. Perfect. I know Tanya has her hands full, because we sent her a whole bunch of stuff for us, uh, two weeks. Anybody else, anything? Yes, sir, Mr. Peg. Yes, sir, Mr. Peg.
We're running out of air, you know, with these years of water today.
Would've never known.
Um, what I was here for is, we committed last week for the, uh, large wind farm slash solar panel. I don't know if you thought this week, Yars kind of is now, uh, received petitions from three townships to ban or prohibit the large wind farms. And I was hoping ours can be on this week.
That's at the prosecutor's office right now, Paula tells me, so, thank you for that. I haven't seen it myself, but thank you for keeping up on that.
Julie Green, I'm doing research on that as well. It's a little bit different than what is being proposed as part of the Yars. My, uh, Senate Bill fifty-two, something, at different parameters. Need to look at it together.
I, I actually, the, the portion that was put out there about Yars, is it viable? Yes, but main things that I think we can come back and look at is, what the other townships are looking at, loss of property values, safety, there's a whole series of things that go into it more than just Yars.
There's, uh, the question I had, someone sent me a packet, concerned citizen in the county. They sent me a packet, it has like eight airports on there that have solar farms on the airport property. Major international airports. And that, what they were contesting was, the landowner, he's got land, he wants to do one. I don't know what township he's in, I haven't dug that deep into it yet. But he wants a solar farm and said, he heard, must've been listening to meetings and heard some of the talk we have here, and said, "Why do these international major airports have solar farms? But they're saying it's bad for us, but they can have them on major airports that transport millions of people a year, but we can't do it for our base."
Julie Green, Trumbull County. The, the recommendations don't say not to. Recommendations say should encourage alternative energy sources. The requirements for the deliverables are- heating of the solar, especially if they are, and, and, so that's Yars too.
They, one of the things he had in there is he had Pittsburgh International Airport and said, "Here's their airbase, here's their solar farms, why do they, can they have it, and we can't?"
No, it doesn't. Well, for, oh, none of, I would say, only a handful have adopted it. And Diana has not adopted the recommendations, just as owners overlay. And it does, food, doesn't prohibit that development. In fact, it says they should allow it.
There's no way I could be alone.
So, their, their proposal to restrict it entirely, I, I have to pull it from our planning commission because I think it conflicts with higher price code, Senate Bill fifty-two, and I wanted to talk more. That's for about how many years I have to retire.
We're, we're, sounds like we're gonna need to work on more, get some other townships involved in it.
I think there's some great places here in Trumbull County we could put solar farms. Um, the old copper well property, we got all kinds of land down here on Pine Street.
It's up to the township.
You know, uh, put some inside a city instead of in the township.
Ultimately, it's up to the township to zone how you want to. I just wanna make sure-
Right.
You have all the information.
Interesting. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I was just checking about, uh, Trumb- um, Mesopotamia Memorial Historical Society's, um, grant, where we're at on that.
That's the funny, isn't it?
Yeah, we already passed that. Um- It's, it's come back, it's come back from legal, we know that.
Okay.
But we need to get it on the agenda, so the Commissioners can vote on it.
We did do it already?
Yeah.
And he, he's saying that we did do it already and pass it? Um, we'll find out after this, we'll go check with, Sarah will know, but I think I remember that too.
Yeah, yeah, it was, uh-
I thought we did that the day we did the cot for Cortland.
Yeah, it, it, it was, yeah, but it, it was, it went to legal-
Right.
And it already come back.
Right.
But now, we need you to vote on it.
No, I think we, that's what he's saying, I think we did when we voted on the cot, I think we did it the same day.
Okay, 'cause we never got notified. If you guys voted on it-
You're gonna have a delay.
Right, I just had the same thing happen with, uh-
'Cause paperwork doesn't-
Cortland hasn't been notified yet about their Safety City, but I know we voted on that one too.
I told them, I told them by email.
Okay.
They asked, I sent it by email.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you, that was voted on?
He'll look for you to make sure, you go into Sharon's office and see if she's got a line for it or whatever, or-
Maybe the clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, Alex, the, Alex Jevon-Jonesy Bush, the journal actions usually take at least a week, if not, sometimes up to two weeks to be turned around. So, they just have to actually write up the journal and all that, and, and they will have an idea if it was approved, but of course, they have to do the journalization and get all the signatures and all that. So, that takes a little bit of time. So, it's not an instant, you know, notification.
Right, which we knew that.
Yeah.
But we were never notified that it was put on the agenda to be voted on, um, you know, does, who needs to be present to accept?
Nobody.
Nobody.
Nobody.